Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 p.m. on November 7th. Regular council meeting will come to order to honor veterans. I've asked retired U.S. Navy Captain Mike Zabel to lead us in the place of allegiance. Captain? Who's that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, with the fiscal, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Jennings, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shurdy.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Interim City Manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Patty. Our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Leslie Notaro. Do I have a second, Captain? And Mike Zabel? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Now we move on to citizen comments. Any citizen who would like to address a council topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait to be called on. We are subject to limit of your comments to no more than three minutes. I see three people. Let's start from the left. Yes, ma'am. Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Deborah DeCosmo, 105 Harper Drive, and I am yielding my minutes to 10.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to yield their time? I guess. Sure, go right ahead.
Wendy Gaddis, 309 22nd Street, and I am yielding my minutes to Tammy.
Ms. Lovenda.
I don't think I'll lead everyone's minutes, but it's nice to have them if I do. Good evening, Tammy Lovenda, 97 Harper Drive. Tonight, we are officially very excited to be launching the newly formed 501(c)(3) public nonprofit, the Belle Air Beach Community Foundation. A small group of citizens, all volunteers, began meeting in May to start the process and begin planning. We have been working hand in hand with our interim city manager, Kyle Reeffler, to ensure a strong working relationship between the city and the foundation from the beginning. I'd like to introduce our board of directors. Again, I'm Tammy Lovenda. I'm the board chair. Our vice chair is Wendy Gaddis. Our secretary is Depp DeCosmo, and our director of marketing is Nicole Sussman. Our mission is to foster a healthy, beautiful, and thriving environment through good works, community improvement projects, and social gatherings to enhance the lives of our residents. Funding for the foundation will be raised through donations, grants, and sponsorships. Some of our goals include charitable and environmental initiatives, memorials and dedication offerings, service projects, and volunteering opportunities to better our community. Possible 2023 projects are Christmas on Gulf Boulevard, and an example of that would be lights or decorations on the utility poles, or the improvement and beautification of one of our parks. The BBCF will have a table at the November 19 Chili Cook-Off with a 50/50 raffle, and we are also sponsoring the dessert table at the event to help cover our startup cost. We are also having a holiday food drive during the month of November for the local food bank. The boxes are near the doors at City Hall. Entry forms for the Chili Cook-Off are on the table over to the left, and then you can buy your tickets from anybody on the parking record or at City Hall. We would love to have Belle Air Beach residents input and are open to suggestions. For more information, visit our website at belairbeachcommunityfoundation.org, contact anyone on the board with questions, and there are also flyers on the table with our information. We look forward to many years of the BBCF having a positive impact on our city. Thank you. And I'm open to any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Ms. Lovenda. Normally, under citizen comments, we don't do back and forth, but in this case, the council may have questions just because it's a new foundation and this is a little bit different than just a normal comment. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
I would like to just commend you guys. Great job. I think it's great that you took the initiative to start the program, and it's going to go well. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it all.
Other comments from the citizens? Yes?
Hi, my name is Nicole Sussman. I live at Maybee, Harper Drive. I just wanted to get up here and let you guys know that the parking record has been working with the residents to hand out the surveys for the easements. I'll show everyone. We have them on the table, too. Everyone's supposed to hand them out by the ninth, so for some reason, if you didn't get one, they'll be up at City Hall and also on the table here if you want to just scan the QR code, because we really want to get all the citizens feedback and have everyone vote so that it's fair judgment on if we should do it or not. So if you have any questions, just reach out to the parking report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Henson.
I know you don't take questions, but I propose that there's one last meeting. You voted to appoint Kyle as the city manager, and yet tonight's meeting still shows him as being the interim city manager. He's making a point. And could we please have the vice mayor put the microphone in front of her when she speaks? I can't hear her in the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Let's move on to item number three, a proclamation. Veterans Day, November 11, 2022. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life, and whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States during the past century, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces during the past century, and whereas our state is home to nearly 1.5 million veterans, and whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others, and whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States was founded can never fail to inspire us, and whereas our veterans understand the important task before the American servicemen and women now keeping watch, and whereas all Floridians must strive to ensure that ours remains a land worthy of the great love our veterans have shown for. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Gaddis, Mayor of the City of Belle Air Beach, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2022, as Veterans Day in the City of Belle Air Beach, and I encourage all people in our city to acknowledge and honor the contribution of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. It is where I set my hand and seal of the City of Belle Air Beach to be affixed on the seventh day of November, 2022. Any other questions? Not for a proclamation, sir. Thank you for everyone that served. I greatly appreciate it. Next, we're up to item number four. We have a law enforcement report from Sergeant McNichol with Pinellas County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening. I have the September 2022 report for you tonight. For the first page of the report, the UCR property impersonal crimes, there was no reports of any crimes on this page. The second page...
Excuse me, sir. Which is highly, very highly unusual.
Usually, there's one or two.
Zero is awesome.
Exactly. The second page is the arrest report. There were a total of four people arrested in Belle Air Beach during the month of September 2022 on seven different charges, and all four of those were tracked related to crimes. The third page of the report is the deputy activity page. There were a total of 754 events in the City of Belle Air Beach during the month, and 879 deputies responded to those events. The final page is the crash and citation analysis. There's two crashes for the month in Belle Air Beach and a combination of 195 citations and crimes issued in the City of Belle Air Beach in October, September. Any questions?
Counsel? Yeah, Mayor? Okay, I guess we're all kind of willing to find out what happened in October with that massive Halloween party.
From what we found out...
Can you give a brief description? Some, I mean, most of the people we talked to have talked about, but some may not know what went on.
Sure, sure. So from what we found out, I believe the address was 1800 or 1880 Belle Air Shore. There's a juvenile high schooler that lives at that residence, and that person invited a few friends over. And like high school parties start, it starts small, and then other kids talk, especially on social media, which tends to blow things up very quickly. So then it ended up being around 200-some kids showed up for a party on the beach in their Halloween costumes. And that's what the problem was with all the parking and everything else going on at the beach accesses and the side streets. Both Deputy Perez and I, our president here and I, were working that night, and we came up here with about three or four other deputies and did the best we could to quickly move the kids along and get them out of here.
I got a question. Were there any arrests or tickets?
There were some parking citations issued there. The exact number, I do not know, and there were no arrests made.
Yes, sir.
I live on 20th Street, and first of all, I'd like to commend the response by the deputies and how they handled the situation. I actually got a call from a neighbor across the street and said, "Well, you see what's going on?" I said, "No, what's going on?" Went out on my porch, and there were literally, every side of my street was parked on, and hundreds of kids were walking like zombies, watching their phone. But it was an interesting situation to handle, like I said. So the 19th Street parking area was completely packed, and that's where the first deputy went. And I won't give you all the details, but I thought the way that that deputy handled the initial wave that was coming through, and then like the deputy said, there were three or four other cars that showed up, and I just thought it was handled extremely professionally, and they did a phenomenal job of being able to get rid of more than a couple of hundred weirdly dressed people walking around the street. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is code enforcement report.
Good evening, council, staff, and citizens of Belle Air Beach. Steve Clacker for the record. Again, if you look at the log that was submitted, had a very busy month, mainly worked a lot on some ordinances dealing with the weeds and the brush and the bushes. Myself and Kyle Reeffler are working diligently with Commissioner Roberts on getting most of these problems resolved. Kyle and I spoke briefly before this meeting, and what we're going to do is we're going to go street by street, and we're going to start working on a lot of the complaints. We don't receive too many complaints as far as the weeds and brush are concerned, but we do notice a lot of, or I do notice a lot of the bushes are over the foot mark. So we are going to be working on that very diligently and trying to get that resolved as quickly as possible. One other issue that we had last, or this past month was I had checked out on 3rd Street, lady was having some work done, unlicensed contractors, and basically they were stopped work and told her, "We're not giving you your money back. We're not going to finish the job." I ended up talking with the contractor. She got all of her money back, and she got to keep the materials that they were doing for the house, and they came to a nice agreement. So that was actually turned over to our economic crimes to do. They are investigating the construction company to see if there's any past practices that they've had problems with. So as that develops, I will keep you all informed. Had another case where a lady had put down $8,000, had work done, contractor never showed up, made one phone call, next day she had her $8,000 back, and again, that also went to our economic crimes. So there were that. Other than that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Nice job. Yes. First of all, I got this note back on you, like, what, last month, about 8 or 4 Harper Drive, actually in our packet. I don't know. You got this. It was from Crimestake and evaluation of that tree. I can't direct you, I mean, it's city manager, you can do it. Hey, you are the city manager, but is it, you can answer this question, Mr. Mayor, but maybe it's the city attorney. Is it proper to put a motion on the floor right now to invoke Section 22-31 under the definition of hazardous conditions and nuisances, specifically the hazardous tree provisioned in that, and have the deputy go out and start studying that?
What I would like to do is direct that question to City Attorney Mora, because he's probably better versed with this.
No.
No?
No. That is not this body's job. You've passed the code. Separation of powers dictates that the executive branch in your form is the city manager and code enforcement inspector. They are, they've clearly reviewed it. They've done diligence, and however they choose to proceed is that the city commission does not direct whether, when, or in what manner code enforcement occurs beyond allocating resources to it and setting the policies that will be enforced.
Well, I don't have the city charter in front of me, but it's citizens, council, city manager.
Without question, sir. We all serve at the pleasure of the citizens, and we serve at your pleasure, honestly.
And in my further reading of it, we can direct the city manager to the council. We cannot direct any of the employees under the city manager, but we can give direction to the city manager and our secretary. That's the way I read the charter. Am I incorrect there?
No, you certainly direct the city manager on a day-to-day basis. Your direction is to the city manager to enforce the city's code. The city manager is doing that, has done that, has confirmed with me. If this council so desires to involve itself in code enforcement in the manner of delineating when and in what manner a particular code measure will be enforced, it may do so with all the attendant risks that come with involving yourself in that scheme. I would say ordinarily, it is the province of the councils who say, "We have passed this code. We have tasked you with enforcing our code," and then that's a performance issue. But if I would counsel against the council or commission involving itself in particular matters for a number of concerns, they extend to protecting you folks, not just the ordinary separation of powers, but also protections according to you in the city and what your function should be.
I appreciate you protecting us, but in this letter, it cites about four to five homes, where this could cause a catastrophe. Okay?
I don't believe he uses the word catastrophe, but I'm familiar with the document.
Well, severe risk. All right. I would be more, I'm more concerned with the citizens that live around that tree than I am with this council, maybe overstepping its boundaries a little bit, not getting into code enforcement or with the city manager. I really do believe a motion would be proper, but you're telling me that.
Ultimately, this body conducts its business however it wishes. You're asking for my advice, I give advice. You don't need to conduct yourselves in conforming with my advice at all times. Ultimately, that's, it's this body's, this city moves by the will of the body, sir. You've asked for my advice, and I've given it, and our perspectives may not always align, but I respect that I do in fact work for you folks, and whatever you folks direct, we will, we will proceed forward.
Hopefully, this windstorm coming doesn't take this tree down, and this has been going on now for months.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask if you have any more discussion about this. You've asked for his opinion, or you asked for my opinion. I'm passive to him. He gave you the information, and now we all have it to consider. With that being said, do we have any other comments for...
We have a question. You spoke about the economic crimes unit. Is it possible that they have a list of contractors that do not meet the law that we can keep here at City Hall to, if anybody asks? We can't recommend contractors, but sure show you a list of people that are operating illegally.
Right. If they go under the Pinellas County Construction Licensing Board website, there's a...
I think that's not easy for people. Is it possible to have a list here?
I'd have to check. I would say no, because again, it depends, they would have to pull case numbers and stuff. But I will tell you that going under the licensing board website is very easy, and all you have to do is search contractor, put the contractor's name in there, and it comes up and tells you if they're active, inactive, suspended. I've showed a few people how to do that, but that would be the best place.
If possible, how could we, like, just keep the, I guess, listing up there, just saying, "Here's the website. If you have questions about your contractor, just go to this website and type in the name of the company."
Yeah, they can do that. I mean, it's very easy to do.
I'm just saying, for the citizens, you know, they can't fool that with their...
I think that that would be an excellent topic to put on the next newsletter, just to get that link out there so that everyone has it, and then, I mean, just about everybody in town's getting it, you know? Yes. I think that would work. Do we have any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You, too. All right. Speaking of the city attorney, item number four, please.
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, one of the, to address a point that was raised earlier this evening, at the last meeting this body gave, authorized the city attorney's office to begin negotiating contract terms with Mr. Reeffler. We have exchanged iterations of that contract. I have provided both the initial draft and revised draft to the council with a summary of those points. Again, I always, whenever I provide a summary, I just wish to reiterate, the source documents control, the summary is there for your ease of reference, so you're not necessarily going to have to send it. So that process remains ongoing. Ultimately, once the parties reach mutually agreeable terms, we will, Mr. Reeffler would, presuming we reach mutually agreeable terms, Mr. Reeffler will ascend that to the office of manager on a full-time basis. As indicated in previous reports, I continue to remain in daily contact with Kyle and Patty on the rate of matters. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer your questions, Kyle.
Counsel?
This time? All right. What I would like to do is if we can wrap this up, maybe next month, we just go ahead and move forward on this. I'm assuming you're giving feedback.
I've not received any feedback, and ultimately, from the, if you mean as it relates to the interim manager's contract to be manager, I've not received any one-on-one feedback, and since it will ultimately be a contract that the body would approve, it'd be best to have that feedback provided in the public hearing setting, so that way, if Member Zabel, for example, gives me a number, and then you give me a number, just to settle is the easiest thing, that I'm not trying to reconcile conflicting things. I can get a consensus. I don't wish to get a consensus outside of a meeting, and so it's my understanding that there were talks of a workshop in the coming weeks, either next week or three weeks from now. I think there's supposed to be potentially three meetings this month, and one of those will be it. That was when I briefly spoke to Kyle this morning. We were talking about what that timeline would look like, ultimately, of course, at this body's discretion.
I think that next week would be a great time to just go ahead and add it to the agenda, and we see if we can pass through this and get it knocked out so that we can vote to approve.
And to avoid any, you know, just confusion or the way that assumptions kind of fill the void, this wasn't rocket science in that, you know, you folks put a lot of thought into the contract they was put before another candidate. Obviously, those terms were very specific to that candidate, but the mold was there. They were, you know, I shaped it based on present realities and anticipating comments. Obviously, Mr. Reeffler framed it based in part on his perspective as an employee, and also the difference being that he is an existing employee, and so, you know, somebody coming in may not have a crewed leave, for example, and how that is dealt with. And so those sorts of elements are in the draft and ultimately for you folks to consider. But I don't wish to give the impression that I, you know, that this has been a yeoman's job or some incredibly difficult task. It's just time and ultimately getting the input of the body that can only be public.
Mr. Roberts?
I was just going to recommend at the next workshop, we could work through that.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Mora? Thank you very much, Mr. Mora. Next up, interim city manager's report. Mr. Reeffler, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Start off the 12th, 13th of May, stormwater project we have and agenda in tonight, possibly change in order to have approval by council. That still has a completion date in January at this point with the extensions it received for the hurricane delay. The Gulf Boulevard undergrounding project, we are still in the phase of going door-to-door to the houses that require easements per Duke Energy. I put together, based on the information from Mutual Consultants of Florida, giving more information of all the projects, what stage we're in the project, what was involved, and a little bit about the easements that were listed. So I plan to put that on the website just to make it available for people to reference and to pay up questions on that project. The 7th Street renovation, 7th Street Boulevard, and 16th Street Seal renovation, we are more than halfway complete on that project. It still has a generic completion date based on the time we gave for the project. I went ahead and started soliciting bids for the fishing dock, so hopefully, as soon as that Seal is complete, I can get that fishing dock rebuilt. So I know some residents are really looking forward to getting that dock back and get that 7th Street functioning. The 17th and 18th Street Stormwater Project, I currently have that on hold, and the reason for that is that we have the Citizens Advisory Committee looking at possibly a bank loan to fund five of the projects all at the time. We're putting together a report and proposal for council to consider, and we're just giving some more information on what the current loan rates are and what we'll be at for the future. The code enforcement analysis project, we just met on November 4th. We pulled in all our results for the survey. The team discussed, analyzed the results, and kind of came up with a game plan on how we want to address what we heard from the residents. Councilmember Roberts and I are going to try to get something together, get that on the November 14 work session. get that on the November 14th work session, agenda, so that we can get some consensus from council on what our ideas are. And then, our plan is to disseminate the information back to the residents and let them know what we, what we heard from them, what our plan is, and then to have a follow-up. And then, we talked in a year down the tunnel, maybe sooner, but to see what our results are and how we do it. The City Hall generator, I recently touched base with the company that's giving me a Sourcewell quote. Based on materials, labor costs, our project cost has increased. So, we budgeted, I believe it was two years ago, $240,000 for the project. Now, we're looking at a number of $281,000 roughly. So, that's something, I know we've talked, we're talking money improvements to emergency management. This kind of goes hand-in-hand with that. Possibly, we can get some feedback from council on if we want to spend the money, if this is in part right to pursue or if we want to reconsider this kind of money and work instead of, you know, other aspects of emergency management.
Do you think we should go back and re-quote?
We can, we can go back and re-quote and let go and get something a little lower. I can collect some $40,000, yes. We did see it increase badly, but this was kind of before we saw a lot of the increases. I can get some new, fresh quotes. This company in specific, it was a lot lower, I'm imagining it's gonna be higher, I can just verify that. Sometimes we get quotes filled with a Sourcewell quote, you know, that doesn't require us to go out to bid. If we go out to bid, sometimes they'll tell you one number, then the number's a lot higher. That's just something to consider, but I can, I can listen to numbers for a while.
Mr. Mayor?
Have we explored a lot of these hospitals, businesses that have generators? They will terminate them after a certain amount of years because of their insurance net. Caterpillar is a big generator company. They take them back, they rework them, and they re-guarantee them, they do a warranty for them. Have we looked at a used generator option which would probably be about half this cost? Because I don't, I don't see the big need for it here. I mean, of course, the power would never need it, but I mean, it's gonna work just as well as a new generator if we can say we have the money. What's, what's the issue?
My knowledge, we haven't looked at any, you know, refurbishing generators, but that's something I can ask to the main members if they, if they do, or if they know. Source to do that.
Because if they come here like that and go tear them down, journal them, and do everything, you know, in my opinion, there's good as no.
Long as they, they want to hit, sure. Sort of a name as well.
Okay. City Hall Seawall, I am getting a budgetary number or quote from the current company that's doing our seawalls now, the sealer they come in, and then another company that has historically been at a good price. So, I'd like to make sure that our $30,000 that we have in the budget is adequate to pay for. I reached out to you, I believe it was like a week and a half ago, about filming requests on Hibiscus Avenue. Got some feedback from council, the majority was okay with it once we talked and worked with the production request to get into a minimal impact on the city traffic and the time that it may impede traffic on Hibiscus. So, currently where it stands, we have the whole production, the whole operation taking place in less than two hours. The actual film or shot that they're gonna do here involves a person who likes them down the road in a van riding by and taking the shots. This will last an maximum of 90 seconds. So, when they do it, they're just gonna do it straight out, get their footage, and be done with it. We asked that they, there were, I think it was maybe 11 vehicles, if that sounds right, for parking on Bella Island right away by the seawall. We got them to get down to two vans and a box truck, and I asked them to pull off of the road so that their house and the traffic got out of all. They expressed concerns that the box truck may be tilted too much of the equipment, so then we agreed that they could drop their equipment and park the box truck in the marina. They'll be able to get the vans off of the road. I spoke with them today. They seemed like people that were going to communicate with all our residents. They put tags on the doors. I got one call from a resident just inquiring about what it was, since I explained if they were okay with it. So, I'm hoping that, you know, this goes positive so that we can sort of figure out some parameters to work with if we can get these requests in the future, so that we can support the local economy. The, I handed out that tree assessment. I was able to get it completed by an independent arborist. He did it on Saturday, so I got the report late this weekend. I just wanted to share that with you for you to read this, what you, what is right up is and make decisions on what you feel, you know, where we're at with that. I mean, there's, there's things we can discuss further. From in talking with the arborist and how they, how they do it, I had to keep him off of the private party's property, so they had to do his assessment from these that are running next to the property. It's called a level-one assessment. That's about, you know, they can tell you some basic information about the tree, they can give you their best guess. What I gathered was maybe a risk of a little more, I believe you said word, moderate on a scale of low, moderate, high, extremes, so it'd be one or two or four. There's a somewhat likely chance of failure, but that is given the weather typical to this area. And then, when it comes to hurricane-force winds, the take I got from him was that any tree in this area could potentially fail and hurricane-force winds, so that's kind of not something that they try to actually put a number to, depending on ground saturation and everything. So, it's, I wanted to get that report because we talked about having a report done by the city that was, you know, completely independent of anything else we heard. I feel like you did a pretty thorough report that we could analyze and decide where we'll go in there.
I think, I think it would be beneficial to the council just to receive a, what's, what's next? What's, what's the procedure for any, any tree that's in this condition within the city? And if we, if we determine that we actually don't have a mechanism in place to deal with this, then the council needs to get to work immediately and come up with an ordinance that will address these problematic trees. I don't want anyone particular in the property or a homeowner, but if there's not something in place already, we definitely should have something to address this.
Right. And I, from talking with people who are cities that have board rest of ordinances to our city attorney, I currently don't believe we have enough to act based on what we can, what we can analyze from a drive-by survey of a tree. And, you know, we can't go on track, probably we really can't dive deep into like when they call it a level-three of analysis of a tree. I think those are all really good, but I think where we're at now, it's gonna involve a little bit more language in our code to accomplish what we maybe might accomplish.
This sounds like a perfect item to add to the next work session. Questions for Mr. Reeffler?
Yes, under 22-31, hazardous tree shall mean any tree that is injured, terminally diseased, dead, in danger of falling, or adjacent property to the building. For any tree that interferes with utility services creates unsafe vision clearance or causing damage to the public or the area. There's utilities where that tree could fall in. There's at least three houses being restored. I don't know what we really need. And I'm reading right from Minnesota, or Minnesota code.
I think they need a work session, we can compare other city codes and sort of the language they use and steps they take, so that I, we can review our code and modify it to be something that might be more successful in accomplishing our goals.
I understand that, it's just the longer this waits, the more risky it is.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Reeffler? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I think, Kyle, I think it's a great idea that the Citizens Advisory Committee is gonna combine those multiple projects. For obvious reasons, it's gonna save the city money. Clearly, there's gonna be some interest involved, which is money we're gonna have to pay. But by, I'm confident by combining those five projects, A, we're gonna get more contractors bidding on it, which is always gonna save the money, it's more competitive. I think it's a great benefit to the citizens because instead of racking out the construction for months and months and years possibly, it will all be done pretty much at one time, which is a great thing. Also, we're getting it done under one contract instead of stretching it out, which is gonna increase costing as well, so, great idea. My question is, off the top of your head, do you know what streets? If you don't know, I can ask this off later, but do you know the streets that are gonna be combined? Clearly, we got Seventeenth and Eighteenth?
Seventeenth, Eighteenth, Nineteenth, Twentieth, and Ninth, and then Morgan and Twenty-Fifth, and, and the last, the, it was Fourteenth through Sixteenth, I'm missing one. Oh, yeah, we'll get all that together, okay? And we have some other numbers and some other assumptions that we're making based on, I've called some contractors that we've worked with and have worked in the area, and we kind of pitched it, I don't know, you know, what would be a reasonable assumption of where we could say if we were to put these projects together? And another thing I calculated was the, all the street servicing to be included with each of these projects in that area, based on our street index and curving. So, we kind of laid it all out, we're working with this still because we wanna, we wanna get all the loan numbers together. But we'll have something presented to you.
Perfect, thanks.
And I just wanted to give you an update. The, we have a storm that's coming, the county's reached out with one situation report. So far, they're gonna go a partner, call tomorrow early up. The storm system, they're cold, so we'll stay tuned on that, keep it guys updated. And then, as an update for the tower, we did get an application submitted. I have an engineer doing a review on it. So, once we have what the engineer's comments are on that permit, I will return it to the applicant, the owner.
When did that application come in?
Came in a week before the last.
So, that the towers, that tower was erected, or the magistrate hearing was about two months ago, looking at.
There was, there was a fine run for that, for that time. Once we got the complete application submitted, I held a fine for now.
Thank you. Hey, Mike S. Sherrill, if you have a question?
No, I was, I was just gonna clarify the streets, but it's irrelevant, because you'll be reporting on it. The streets that are going to try to flock into this stormwater project remain, if anyone's in, I see Seventeenth, Eighteenth, Nineteenth, Twentieth, Ninetheth Street, Twenty-second, Twenty-third, Morgan, Twenty-Fifth, Fourteenth, Sixteenth, Marina, and Bella Island Estates.
We did not go as far as to Marina or Bella Island Estates, we feel. There wasn't actual EMPs in our master plan. But there was one for Marina, but we felt like, you know, that's kind of one that isn't really high in demand, or what we wanted to go about, focus on now. And then, when we talked about Bella Island Estates, and kind of felt like this was an EMP, we needed to, the next stage of planning to take place with that.
It would be very nice to have a few years where we didn't discuss stormwater projects. So, I hope you're able to work it out, and we can move forward on this. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Reeffler? Thank you very much, Mr. Reeffler. Thank you. Number seven. City Clerk?
I just have two updates. The one is the appeal that was made for the home to be built with three habitable floors, and that was denied. Mr. Reeffler and Mr. Moore were both at that hearing. And then, the update on the satisfaction of lien for Sixteenth Street, and that we did receive the confirmation that it was released and released, so that's complete.
Ms. Chindry, I have a question about the agenda. I noticed that there's no ownership on the agenda items this time. Most of them I can pick, I can pick out, but I just noticed that there's no ownership from who added the agenda items. Something we can turn back on in the next, the next meeting?
Yes. Most of them I, I didn't think were, had a sponsorship or, but definitely yes, of course.
I appreciate it. Any questions or comments for, any?
Now, you just submitted about two weeks ago a resolution presented tonight. When you said it was one of your agenda, it's not. Is there a reason why?
Yes. It, you wanted to have discussion of it, and discussion has to be at a workshop, so it's already on the workshop for November 14th, that agenda, it's on there. Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you, Peggy.
Welcome.
Alright, and we are up to item number eight, which is a public hearing. This is consideration of ordinance 22-04, which is a second reading. Mr. Moore, would you please read the summary?
Captain, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number 22-04. An ordinance that City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, amended Chapter 30 Marine Structures, Activities, and Facilities per Article 4 of Beach of the City's Code of Ordinances to repeal provisions in Section 30-141 establishing the Gulf of Mexico Safety Zone in order to conform to applicable state laws and regulations, replacing the Gulf of Mexico Safety Zone with a vessel exclusion zone designated as a public bathing beach, restricted to manually repelled vessels only, providing for the installation of regulatory markers, providing, establishing violations relating to the public bathing beach, establishing the means of enforcement, amending, excuse me, amending Section 30-142 through 30-144 to conform with the restrictions applicable within the created vessel exclusion zone, providing for the incorporation of recitals, providing administrative direction to implement this ordinance, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. This is a second and final reading ordinance number 22-04 by Title I. As this, this ordinance came before this council on first reading last month, this conforms precisely to what was approved. There was some added language where we were, as discussed during the, during the consideration of that ordinance to conform the remaining provisions, inasmuch as they made reference to not being able to place blueies or other things that just didn't jive with what we were doing here. And so, we made, I made sure that that got included per the council's direction. Otherwise, this completely conformed with what was discussed from this past unanimous, like, on first year.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we start working on this one, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 22-04? Sumut? Motion made by Mike Zabel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike S. Sherrill? Mr. Zabel, you have the floor.
We reviewed that, we've done our due diligence on this issue. Obviously, we've had multiple hearings with people and out and about. And thank you to everybody involved in this. We have considered many viewpoints, and it all came together and are very nicely worded and solid piece of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. No other comments from the council? Alright, let's go to the citizens, who do you want to speak on this topic? Back to the council, would Mr. Zabel have the last word? Recommend approval? Recommend approval. All right, so let's take a vote. This is to approve the second reading ordinance twenty-two dash zero four. Ms. Tindrey, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Sable.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye. And so, the passage unanimously from six to zero.
Just wish to add that upon this past month's reading, I did communicate with my contact at FWC to make them aware, just moving forward date, I will properly make them aware of this passage, and we will begin whatever process is necessary on the administrative side, so messages.
Thank you for staying on top of it. Appreciate all your hard work. All right, now we are to the consent agenda. Items nine and ten. That's for approval of the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two final budget public hearing minutes, and approval of the October tenth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda, or the consent agenda passing. All right, now we are on to the regular agenda. This is for consideration, item number eleven is for consideration of resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero nine. Mr. Moore, would you please read the summary?
One moment, Mr. Mayor, I gave that page option. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is resolution twenty-two dash zero nine, a resolution to City Council of the City of Bellar Beach, Florida, providing for changes in the general fund capital projects fund and stormwater fund appropriations to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two annual budget, whereas the City Council of the City of Bellar Beach adopted resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero nine on Monday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, adopting the twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two budget, whereas court of statute one sixty-six two forty-one sub seven, the governing body of each municipality at any time, within a fiscal year or within sixty days following the end of the fiscal year, may amend the budget for that year as follows. If a budget amendment is required for a purpose not specifically authorized, in paragraph A, in paragraph B, the budget amendment must be adopted in the same manner as the original budget unless otherwise specified in the municipality's charter, whereas the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year must be amended to reflect bad debt expense for forgiven fines, additional payments of debt principal and interest, and additional storm drain maintenance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Bellar Beach, Florida. Section one, the City of Bellar Beach annual budget for the following funds shall be amended as described on the attached budget adjustment request, exhibit A, and in section two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. This is a final reading of resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero nine in full as a budget resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero nine? Motion made by Wesley Notaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Sable. Wesley, you have a floor.
I think it's self-explanatory, okay? Where it stands, it says, if you change it, go back and redo, amend the budget, that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? Nope. Let's go to the citizens for comments. If you would like to speak. All right, we're back to the council. Vice Mayor, you have the last word. So, this is to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash zero one. Ms. Tindrey, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Sable.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye.
So, the resolution passes six to zero. Item twelve, consideration of appointment of park and recreation board member. Before we get started, do I have a motion for the appointment? Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All right, we have only one candidate, and that is Deborah Keith, also known as Debbie. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Keith if she would like to introduce herself to the
Debbie Keith, one and nine Harbor.
One and nine Harbor Drive.
She's had a house here for like twenty years, and been part of the Bronx American Board in the past, and I'm really happy to be part of the team again.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Keith? This isn't a big deal, but I just noticed, Patty, that the subject says appointment of alternate members to member. Is that important? You know, change that, or?
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't change it from the last time I'd seen that. Thank you, Lloyd, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, since we only have one candidate, we can just do a roll call vote. Patty?
You would like the roll call vote?
Let's do a roll call vote.
All right. Councilmember Bankard.
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Sable.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis.
Aye.
So, it passes unanimously, and congratulations, Ms. Keith. Thank you for calling, agreeing with the vote. Now, we're on to item thirteen, consideration of change work options on the twelfth street, thirteenth street, and Bay Drive Stormwater Project. Do I have a motion to proceed? Motion made by Frank Tanker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Wesley Notaro. Mr. Reefer, would you like to explain this to us?
Okay, so, it all started, if you get onto the background paragraph, there was a pipe we discovered, I mentioned it, it was two council meetings ago, it was a fifteen-inch elliptical RCP pipe that was discovered, that was not indicated on the survey or pre- previous engineering plans when the assignment was done. The, since the discovery of this pipe, we determined that there were two options, and that was based on, that it's currently underneath the curb on the north side of Twelfth Street, and there's only so much room to work with. We camera that pipe, and I sent the link to each of the council members to show the condition of the pipe at the time that we discovered, what it looked like inside it. So, the engineer has come up with two possible options we can do in this situation. Option one involves removing the, it's a hundred and twelve linear feet above the existing fifteen-inch RCP, and that involves a cost of three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and the other option won't be to install a twelve-inch C nine hundred PVC for the estimated cost of fourteen thousand dollars, fourteen thousand forty dollars. So, that would be the total, total estimated cost of seventeen thousand five hundred and eight dollars. The other option is to solely just remove the pipe and you're not placing. The engineer, dual associates, which is now orders, SEPI Incorporated, their recommendation was to, to do option one and to remove the pipe or replace it with a pipe, which would be the twelve-inch pipe, and that is for the, the, the maintain the characters, the underground stormwater drainage system. I do have the engineer, Al Carrier, who made the recommendation, or is firm as, and he's here to answer questions specifically towards his recommendation. And then, I put together the numbers of where we're at in the project. This can be paid for out of the ten percent contingency budget that we get allotted for the project. Currently, our contingency balance is forty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This will put a certain contingency balance of twenty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. And speaking with the engineers who work around the project, do not anticipate us running the contingency budget, but that cannot be guaranteed because we do not know exactly what's going to happen. We ran into a lot of conflicts with lattos, service lines, once they uncovered. So, that's kind of where we're at. Like I said, Mr. Carrier's here to answer the questions you have, and I included the approximate pipe location, probably easier to see in the digital document, but the dual recommendation for this, for this, these options, and then the two proposals that are presented by the construction company.
All right. Sir, would you mind giving us your name again?
Hi, I'm Al Carrier with SEPI Incorporated. We were dual associates and were purchased by SEPI back in March of this past year. We did notice the, the dual associates at the time took over the project from your former engineering firm, kind of midstream. The survey had already been done by a local surveyor, and he did not pick up the extra pipe that was in the ground. The system drains through, it's called the CDS unit, and you guys had pulled a permit from Swat Mud, I think about twenty years ago. When we reevaluated the system, we're looking at getting rid of the CDS unit, but there was still some life to the, I guess she receives three eight dollars at the time from Swat Mud, and there was still some life left in that CDS unit, so the district Swat Mud would not allow us to remove it. All the plans that we had seen did not show that extra pipe. It's a, it's a parallel pipe to the CDS unit that takes water out through the C well. When we discovered the extra pipe, we didn't want to, we didn't want to go through a process of removing the pipe and then finding out that the system didn't have the capacity to take all the water through the CDS unit. So, looking at it, but they can, it's there for a reason. Let's not upset the apple cart, we're just going to leave the pipe where the integrity of the pipe, conveyance through the pipe. Let's leave it there and leave it intact. The existing pipe, I believe you all looked at it, as Kyle mentioned, it's in pretty poor shape. It's got lateral cracking, you can see the joints are displaced slightly, and then there's rebar showing through the pipe. When the pipe was actually set years ago, they used to call them lift holes, they would leave a little pocket of concrete out from the top of the pipe, expose the rebar, and they'd use that to grab the pipe and locate it, and then use it, contractor would come back and patch that pipe, that hole. Almost all those lift holes are either deteriorated or get ready to fall in it. So, it's our recommendation to go ahead and remove the pipe. We're downsizing it slightly to a twelve-inch pipe. The pipe that's in the ground is an elliptical pipe, and there's only about four inches of cover, which is probably another reason why the pipe's cracking. There's not enough bedding on top of the pipe to securely protect the pipe from traffic. The curb that it does go on, there's only about four inches in thickness, we're typically between seven and nine. So, our recommendation, let's, let's put a new pipe, and the C nine hundred pipe, it's a twelve-inch pipe, will give us added cover over the pipe that we're composing, and we'll still have that conveyance, the secondary routing for the water that we need.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Yes, sir. You're going to remove the concrete pipe and put PDC pipe in there, C nine, C nine, and you're only going to have four inches of a overlay on top?
No, the reason why we're putting the twelve-inch C nine hundred pipe is because the existing pipe only had four inches of cover. With the C nine hundred, we'll have about eight and a half inches of cover.
Because you have three inches of outside diameter on the concrete.
Plus, plus the bells of pipe.
Okay. And here's a strange question for you. Why can't we use C nine pipe for total drainage?
You can, but it's, it's expensive. It's a more expensive option than just using concrete pipe.
It's more expensive than concrete pipe today?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm not aware of that. I'm not buying right for the last couple years. Go ahead. Mr. Sable?
I noticed, tore through the estimates, price does not include palm tree removal and replacement. Are we looking at palm tree removal and replacement?
No. Or none?
No, it's all within the roadway or under the curb.
Keith? I had a question, and it's probably a dumb one, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What happens if we do nothing?
My gut's telling me that you're going to have street flooding upstream of that CDS unit. So, that, that CDS network's, it's called a centrifugal deflection device, so the stormer gets in there and spins, and the solids remove themselves from the flow stream and settle into the bottom of the solid. That creates what they call head loss, right? So, it takes energy to, to remove those, those particles out of the stormwater stream. The system is so shallow and so flat that I believe that during bigger storm runs, it's going to back the water up into the, into the streets upstream of that CDS unit. What makes me kind of think, maybe that secondary pipe was there for a reason, maybe it was part of the original design, maybe it's an afterthought, because it's not on the original plans, but somebody might have gone out there and put that in at the same time, thinking, we're going to have issues. They might have saw the issues during construction. I, I don't know, it's just my gut. It's just from what I've seen from experience.
So, in your opinion, removing it entirely is, may be a safer bet than leaving it as is?
Yes. You don't want to leave that existing pipe there. You're going to be putting in new curbs, new asphalt. I don't know what the life left is in that pipe. With construction activity around it, there's obviously more damage that's being done to it, heavy equipment going over it, and not being compacted down on all sides, it's been exposed. So, my suggestion is get rid of the old pipe, put in a new pipe.
And even if it was plugged, eventually the street would start, it would start hanging, is that right?
You could, you could plug it typically. My recommendation is never leave a pipe in the street, even, never abandon it. We always load, we'll fill it, but we can't remove it. So, that is an option. Not my recommendation. My recommendation is get it out of there, put a new pipe.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Sable?
I do, I really don't know you. Are you a, where's your degree from? Do you have a professional engineer? What's your background? Can you give us a brief synopsis? Because you're saying a lot of, my belief is, you will do that. I don't know you, I don't know your qualifications. Can you briefly go over that?
I'm graduated from University of South Florida, been in the business almost thirty years now, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida, I'm also a registered land surveyor in the state of Florida. Persest dual associates from Seaport Boulevard in two thousand and six, and we recently just sold the company back in March. I've worked for the city of Clearwater for almost ten years. I was their assistant director of engineering, oversaw stormwater and environmental management section. I was with a couple of private firms before that, with Hillsborough County for a short step. Honestly, I didn't like to drive, so I left Hillsborough County, went to Clearwater, and then was at Clearwater for ten years, and then at dual associates since two thousand and six.
Okay, so your opinion is still current?
Yes.
Okay. Before I go to the citizens, any other comments? Yes, Roberts?
Kyle, last time we talked a little bit about the possibility of errors and emissions insurance. Did anybody, did you have an opportunity to speak with anybody about that?
I spoke to the city attorney, and I spoke with Al, and it didn't, based on what happened and the way the contract was translated, it didn't seem like it would fall under that errors and emissions.
Do you guys have errors and emissions insurance?
Yes.
Did you have an opportunity to talk with the insurance company?
No. But it wouldn't, in my opinion, it wouldn't qualify for errors and emissions. The error wasn't done on behalf of our work, our expertise. It was, the pipe wasn't seen by the surveyor, we relied on that information. There was no atlases, you guys didn't have the atlases of what was in the ground at the time. We just hadn't discovered during construction.
Is that something you could take a moment and contact your insurance company and see what they say?
Sure.
And to be blunt, what would you be looking for?
We'd be looking for the insurance company to cover the cost, what we have to do now because we weren't aware of that.
Again, in my experience... Again, in my experience, just because the pipe wasn't there or it wasn't seen in the forefront, even if it was, okay, let's go back. If it was seen, we would recommend that you remove or replace it. You would have incurred that cost anyway. This isn't something that's above and beyond and I don't want to talk them, you know.
The fact that this is a change order, you're saying you don't think the change order cost, had this been inclusive of the original contract bid, your feeling is it would be the exact same cost then as it is now?
No. For what, I understand where you're getting at now. If it was on the plans originally, then the cost would have been more in line with the other prices that are on the, on the bid sheet at the original time of, of.
So, what we would want to pursue then would be the delta. So, if you were able to say, this five dollars initially and now it's eight because it's a change order because we didn't know about it, then we'd like three dollars back.
I get that.
And to the extent legal was asked to confer with the city manager on this, my insight wasn't that it's impossible to pursue those sorts of things under certain, under certain circumstances. It was factually understanding that, and as I understood and explained here as well, the engineer to whom we were speaking assumed the project based on project, based on work performed by a different company, a different entity that surveyed it, not theirs. And so, their insurer is unlikely to insure the work of a third party. And so, were we to pursue that, it's not that it could possibly never be pursued, we'd be pursuing it against another entity. And then the resources expended in that regard to identify, pursue and potentially make legal claims against that was not, at least as we initially discussed it, not where we thought the resources were best allocated to identify that former, former, former surveyor whose work was done, submit a complaint with them, have them pursue it. The amount of resources allocated to that was not seen as, as per, which is a cost benefit of the costs at that time.
And sometimes, as we know, with insurance companies, and we all love them, would be, you know, if you followed with your insurance company, typically they, they would say, well, that's not our deal. They would go after the other insurance company. We don't care who they go after, just as long as we get something like that.
Nice way of putting that.
I think the bottom line is how many hours would it take for your firm to address this matter if you had to go to court?
I didn't quantify it. It was in excess of just going forward was, was my initial impression when speaking with the manager.
So, the question is, I guess.
I have no chance to speak and thank you, Mr. Carrier, for providing all this information. I don't, I don't have anyone who can have any liability when the city itself doesn't have documentation of what's in the ground. There's, there lies the problem. I've been in your shoes many times trying to construct something with the documentation from the city and it always falls back on the contractor and, you know, there's, there's no way to foresee this. But my question is along the lines with, Kyle, we've got the money in a contingency fund already. We haven't, we still have remaining 20, nearly $27,000 in that fund. Does that budget also include our paving and have we gotten numbers for paving to complete this project?
Yes, all of this paving and all the hard work. And that 20, 26, that would be after we did option two.
Right. After we, after we moved forward, replaced the pipe, keep the storm system running as it was, more efficiently with a smaller pipe possibly. And so, we still have nearly $27,000 sitting there for other errors, other, we should have uncovered anything else that might come up at this point. Would you agree, Mr. Carrier, anything else?
At, at least on the one side.
There's a major increase in the price of something.
Right. So, the north side of the project, the contractor has done, has verified survey. We had some issues with the survey on the south side. The invert elevations and the, the elevations of the pipes and the inlets and stuff were a little bit different. The contractors get different information than what was actually done in the survey. We went back and we checked. I just found out from TNR, construction inspector, this afternoon that she got verification that the information they got from the contractors doing their survey is pretty consistent with what the surveyor has. There's a little, there's a few nuances, little differences, but it looks like it's something we can deal with. And you have a little more fall, if you will, on that side of this, this street. So, we have a little more play to get the pipes in the ground and we come across some conflicts. But we're not, we're not anticipating another conflict like this.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Carrier?
One more. So, the, we had the price video, right? So, in my mind, I have difficulty understanding when that little dude is riding around inside the pipes, how in the world did they have not seen the other pipe?
I get it to, so when they had, they go in on 12th Street, they were all being able to get into manholes on the south side of the street. And they looked at the cross pipes, they were so full of sediment, they couldn't get over that way. They couldn't pull the grates on the north side of the street because they were afraid that they were discrable.
Right.
And more to that point, yeah, when we removed the boxes of the structures. So, that's pretty much how it happened.
So, the, the video equipment never actually went in that area?
It never, no. And, and to their knowledge, they thought that it was only cross pipes. So, they looked down each of those pipes and they saw a sediment, but they never, they didn't want to go down in the pipe because they knew the grade, it was falling apart.
Okay. All right. We've heard Mr. Carrier's opinion, his recommendation. Mr. Reefer, what is your recommendation?
I support the engineer's decision.
All right. Before we go to a vote, can we take this to the citizens? Would anyone like to comment on this? So, all right. I'm going to come back to Frank Banker for the last word. Anyone want to take a vote?
Yeah, I, I agree. I went out and looked at that job before, but we voted and some of those culverts would collapse. I mean, you couldn't see that. It was just full of debris, top concrete and everything went dead. So, I think we should look forward.
All right. So, Patty, what we're going to do is we're going to take a roll call vote and council, you're going to have to vote for option one, which is complete removal and replacement at $17,508.18, or option two, which is removal only at the cost of $3,468.18. Patty, please follow.
Councilmember Banker?
One.
Councilmember Notaro?
Option one.
Councilmember Roberts?
Option one.
Councilmember Zabel?
Option one.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Option one.
Mayor Gaddis?
Option one. So, option one had six votes. Option two had none. Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed with option number one.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Mr. Carrier, for coming out tonight. All right. So, along to number 14. This is to authorize the city manager to execute assignment and assumption agreement with innovation. Will we begin? Do I have a motion to authorize? Which is made by Wes Matheo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Frank Banker. Mr. Reefer?
So, this, this execution of the assignment and assumption agreement with innovation was based on the fact that Trans System Corporation has recently purchased SEPI Engineering Construction Incorporated. This is very similar to what happened with SEPI Engineering purchase and Duell &amp; Associates in 2000, June of 2022, so earlier this year. The original engineering services agreement was as early as signed as executed September 6th, 2019. And so, I'm requesting, if I included the notification email from SEPI and the data that was given this information and their, their view, the city attorney has reviewed all this information. And then that being said, as we discussed in the prior meeting, I'm very close to advertising and putting the RFQ out for engineering services. Now, I plan to be advertised, to go out on paper on November 16th, which is Wednesday. We're going to give about a month's time for that.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Next time you speak, would you mind giving a little closer to the point? I'm struggling to hear you. All right. The motion was made by Wes Matheo. Would you like a discussion?
I think it's pretty clear. It was just a, one company merged with another company, but the other company was, that's very simple. Technically.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? No. Let's go to the citizens. Anyone who would like to speak on this topic? All right. So, we're back to the council. I think we can just do this with a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to move forward to the agreement.
Thank you.
All right. We are now on to number 15. This is consideration of the procedure to fill the vacant city council seat. Will we begin on the emotion?
Motion.
Motion made by Mike Zabel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All right. I put this one in with, with the help of Patty. The procedure document you have in front of you is pretty much the same format that was used the last time there was a vacancy to fill. Council has the right to select a replacement member just about any way we see fit to, so long as we agree on the method. I'm asking for approval of this method to be used on November, on November 28th, whenever we elect a replacement council member for Vice Mayor Duell. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Well, we've already, we've made the motion to approve it and now we're just going to have a discussion about it. Is everyone on the same page?
As a technical matter, Mr. Mayor, you made the motion to have the, place the item on the table for discussion. Member Banker is moving to approve.
He's just moving straight on. Okay. All right. I apologize. Now, there's a motion on the table to, to approve this. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give that one to Lloyd Roberts. I think we can just do it all in favor. All in favor? Before we do that, to be clear, public comment, apologies, my bad. No, you're right. You're right. I'm sorry. This, this one's kind of got a little weird. Citizens? Yes, sir?
I'm a little confused. If you already have a procedure of replacing and appointing a city council member, why does it even have to be discussed again? If it's a valid standing instruction or policy procedure in the current city? Look, I don't understand why you're even having to have a discussion to vote on it.
Mayor, I think I can answer if you'd like.
Be my guest.
The, your charter sets forth that the city council, council, yes, sorry. The city council has the ability to determine how it will call a vacancy. Under past administration, they, they selected a policy during a precise vacancy. It was not established as a standing policy. It's not codified as a resolution or ordinance. That composition of the council having changed, this council is well within its discretion to determine how it wishes to proceed. You've said, you've recognized that there was nothing that was problematic for your purposes about that procedure and you wish to endorse it for this instance, but it was not a standing codified policy in your ordinance as a resolution. It was an informal series of documents adopted by a previous council to proceed and brought forth again. So, had you folks decided by way of example that you just wished to do it by drawing lots or taking, you know, picking names out of a hat and ignoring that prior proceeding, you could have done as much as well. The fact that you, that the policy holds this really at your discretion.
Thank you for clarifying that for us.
That clears it for me too. I mean, I was just a little confused about how it went. I learned something tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, we, I'm a little confused about the procedure here because we had a motion to approve the procedure, but then we moved right over to.
It's actually, it's, and forgive me, I'm doing a lot of lecturing on parliamentary procedure lately, not speaking, I mean, like traveling and speaking and educating. The way you folks operate as a body, you move to discuss something in the first place, which is perfectly valid within market rules and the way to do things. So, you place it on the proverbial table for discussion. This kind of came up when I transitioned here and you guys would just say, motion. So, you said, we're riding with this issue, motion, second. And what you're saying is, we agree that we still want to take this up because it has happened in my tenure here where you get to an item and it dies for lack of a motion saying, which is functional in the body, saying, we don't even want to talk about this, much less decide on a proposed solution. So, what you've done is the original motion was, we want to talk about this. And then you said, okay, now that we're talking about it, I've come up with a proposed procedure that I think works. And then Member Banker said, yeah, me too. So, I'm going to move to just use this method. And so, it went from a discussion to a proposed solution. And so, the motion on the floor as it stands now is to endorse the solution you brought forward.
All right. So, we had a motion to approve the method made by Frank Banker. Do we have a second? I thought I said, I can. Lloyd Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We've got a plan here and we will take care of this on the 28th.
Floyd Roberts, is that a special city council meeting?
That will be a special city council meeting. Do you have a second? I'm sorry, do you have a second? No, it is the 28th. It is the last Monday before our regular council meeting. Yes, Mr. Roberts?
So, Patty, is that the day, will that be the first day that we receive the names and the resumes or will we get that ahead of time?
Yes, that agenda packet with all the names and applications will go out to you on Wednesday. This Wednesday.
What we're doing is we're working around Patty's vacation.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really do appreciate that.
All right. Item 16, unfinished business. Do you have any unfinished business? I don't see that we were unsuccessful in having a work session this month. We're going to make it for, or last month, we're going to make it for this month with special meetings and work sessions, but we'll, we'll get caught back up. I don't really think we're that far behind. I think that we're doing pretty well. All right.
May I confirm then, while we're talking about sessions and meetings, can you just publicly tell us because we generally it's all on the last page and having a, it's not too many.
Okay. So, next Monday is our work session. And then we won't have another one until the 28th, which is the special council meeting whenever we elect Glenn Gunn's replacement.
Oh, at 6:00 PM, correct?
Yes. All right. Item 17, council comments. I had so much fun letting the computer generate random order last month. I'd do it again. So, this month, we start off with Councilmember Roberts. You have the floor.
All right. So, just kind of a humorous comment here that, again, going back to that infamous Saturday night prior to Halloween, one of, one of the deputies who was, to me, looked like he was, there's too many people there in the parking lot on 19th Street. And of course, many of the youngsters these days don't seem to have been, I'm starting to say, have they been raised properly? And so, one guy came up to the police officer and said, hey, I'm going on the beach. And the deputy said, nobody's going on the beach. We're shutting this down. Party's over. Go home. At which point, the young man said, hey, I know my rights. I can go on the beach and I'm just going to walk past you. And one of the deputies said, say that again. At which point, the young man thought otherwise and turned around with his friend and they left. So, again, I just want to praise the deputies that were out there that night. I'm not sure how I would respond to it. It was just overwhelming. You see, I don't know how many people, but it seemed like three to 400 people just walking around there completely out of control. And it was within 30 minutes, they were all gone. So, again, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right, let's move to Councilmember Banker.
Just briefly, I'm glad to see a board is trying to vote for the buoys, for keeping the buoys, I think it's a safety item. A year ago, this council voted six to one to put a few buoys in if Ballard Shores improved from like First Street to Seventeenth, Blair to Seventh Street, Ballard Shores. I'm wondering if this council would do that now, because I went over to talk to Ballard Shores, the mayor there was very gracious about our offer, but he wanted to wait until after the election, the election's been over since March. I wonder if this council would be willing to do the same if they were going in and helping install it.
I'm going to respond to that, because I think that I may have picked up on, I may have gotten a different message, and I remember whenever you presented it, and I think that they were more worried about maintenance and upkeep, because once there's a buoy out there, it's no longer, it's no longer our, we're not paying for it, they will be paying for it. And so this council would have to, I believe, to get them to agree that if they would even do it at all, would be to agree to assume maintenance and upkeep on those buoys also.
We have, we actually, we still have it in our local rate of maintain and installing from Bell, from First Street to Dorcas Avenue. It's never been removed by either board, and we were always the city that installed it, maintained it, replaced it. And I just think that the P, First Street to Twentieth Street deserve the same protection that Twentieth Street did at parts.
There's another, something else to consider on that also, they would have to go through the same permitting process that we will have to.
Yes, sir.
Carrier has a point of order, we shouldn't be discussing this during council comments that this should be reserved as a manageable working session.
I'm okay with that. You okay with that?
I'm fine, I have to stand, that's my comments, I'm entitled to my comments.
Would you like to make any more?
Thanks to all the veterans, for Veterans Day, I remember the one senator saying about standing for the national anthem, come over to Arlington Cemetery, I'll serve you four hundred thousand reasons why I should stand.
Thank you. Mr. Zabel?
Oh, okay. On that topic, just want to go out there, Best Chief, Happy Veterans Day, you both tend to forgive that there's Memorial Day, and that's for our fallen Veterans Day, for all those guys above ground. I also want to point out, he recently was elected to a national office from the Naval Reserve Association, so Best Chief, congratulations.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Lance Natero?
Still have it.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Just once again, thank everyone for attending the meetings, we really appreciate the participation, and definitely appreciate what our citizens are doing, rallying together, and stepping up to serve on boards and assisting council on the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone, our next work session is on Monday, November fourteenth. I'd also like to remind everyone that the Park and Rec Board is hosting a chili cookoff on Saturday, November nineteenth, between noon and two P M. I wasn't kidding whenever I said I would bring my chili, however, I will only be there to, as an exhibit, not as a competitor, but I will be serving chili that day, so.
Just chugging in to view as an exhibit?
Let's see here, November twenty-eighth, we'll have a special council meeting to elect a council member to replace Glenn Gunn. If you haven't applied and want to, you need to do it by Wednesday, is that correct, Patty?
Yes, the night.
All right, and also, we're expecting another storm, it's not going to be like Ian, but still, they're predicting possible fifty mile per hour gusts, so if you've got anything loose in your yard, you might want to tie it down or bring it inside. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us tonight, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I just, I just wanted to have a...
Just one more thank you for the Parks and Rec Committee, I don't know how many people here had a chance to attend, but they put on the Halloween costume for the youngsters and the, and the dogs as well, thought they did a great job, and the judges were extremely intelligent, had a lot of wisdom, as a result of awarding the first prize to my granddaughter of the week, so it was a great time, thanks, thanks to the committee.
Dog bones donated to Nelson County Shelter, and the first prize got the name back from Nelson County Shelter, we were very thankful. If anybody needs a dog, we're up to about three right now, please, please, I mean, some of the dogs have been in there for months, it's just continuing.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Frank Banker, do I have a second?
Just a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think so. All right, good night, everyone.